If you're not allowed to.
I'm not yet.
The speaker, I can hear it.
My microphone's on.
It's better if you weren't being big enough to.
Oh, okay. Test, better, okay. Board of Commissioners meeting for July 29, 2025, our special meeting. If you would please stand for our Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God and individual with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Limited public comment at this time. Any member of the public wishing to address the Board may do so for up to three minutes for any item listed on our agenda.
Good morning, Commissioners.
Good morning.
Ted DeVries from Prairieville Township. One, I want to thank the Board for having this educational meeting. I want to thank Jim Dahl for putting this on and coming up with everything. Just one of the things I wanted to make sure on the agenda, which I did print out, there were two items on there that really I have a vested interest in. One is the apportionments and assessments and also the lake levels. And so I'm hoping some of these questions will be answered today. What is the criteria for determining the assessment district? And this is how many parcels and how the parcels are picked, whether it's counted as a front lot, back lot, island, those type of things. And then how is the role set up done? Say, once again, front lot, back lot? What kind of other different costs to those when they put in the assessment district and the role? What about multiple parcels owned by the same person? Does the Drain Commissioner feel that, you know, figure that in? Is that part of the process? And then what about lake level projects that crosses county lines? Obviously, at Pine Lake, we have an issue like that. Just once again, drain projects and lake level assessments, they do affect many residents and townships in Berry County. My township got hit pretty hard, so. But anyway, those are just some of the questions and look forward to hearing a lot that's going to be presented today. Thank you.
Thank you. We're going to have some time for some question and answer afterwards, so if we don't get those questions answered during the presentation, we'll address them at that point.
Okay.
Additional public comment?
Good morning. Rick Moore, Still Harbor Master, the Podunk Lake Yacht Club, which is a Springfield lake with one little dam. It was built there about the time my grandfather built the house in 1956. The yacht club is an unofficial organization that I inherited from Bruce Edger, and so I just print up T-shirts and give them away to folks to let them know that, yes, there really is a podunk lake, because podunk is synonymous with backwoods. And I also wish to remind members and guests to speak into the microphone, especially the Commissioners, because we can't quite hear you over the Internet. So, once again, thank you for all the wonderful things you do, including the things we know and the things we don't, because we know you're always busy doing other things for the county, and we certainly appreciate that. So, thank you very much.
Absolutely. Additional public comment? Okay, we'll move ahead with our presentation this morning. Just as a side note, I got a message that our audiovisual system may not be functioning properly, so we're going to record it so we can replay that for anybody who's interested in the future. Hopefully, we'll get the video part of it with it as well, but I think we're capturing the audio. Is that correct?
Currently, the audio, hopefully the visual as well, but I don't know the year.
And we'll be having that system looked at again. I appreciate Ted letting us know last week that our system wasn't functioning again, so we have a few things to take care of. So, with that, presentations this morning. Doug Kelly, attorney at law from Clark Hill, and Jim Dahl to give us a presentation, Drain Code 101. We have been waiting for this for years and years to get this information. Not being able to sleep at night. Would you guys prefer the table up there versus the podium?
I think we'd be money ahead.
I think that'd be helpful. You've got a few things up there, so.
Yeah, this should help with my insomnia issues, didn't it?
Bart, does this work?
It worked when Kelly punched it, didn't it?
It did, yeah.
Sorry. I'll take, you take this.
If not, I may.
I'll take this.
That's what usually happens, isn't it?
Yeah. Your first one. All right. Give your moment to readjust.
All right, if we're ready. And thanks for the tip of speaking in the microphone, because sometimes, you know, in a courtroom, I like to wander around, but now we have to be mindful that things are recorded. So, my name is Doug Kelly. I'm an attorney. I'm a drain attorney. My mother would have been very proud to hear me say that. I've been doing this over 30 years, probably 25 years working with Drain Commissioners around the state. I've worked over, probably over 30 counties, on and off. Some counties have, you know, more need for legal services than others, but, yeah, I got started doing eminent domain cases, and then I discovered this thing called the Drain Code, which we'll be talking about today. What do I point?
They got their books.
Do you know how this works? What do I do? Which one do I click?
I'm going to click that one right there. It's not working, Martin. Make sure it's on.
Next.
It's on. No, it's not working.
Well.
Next. Doug will be explaining most of this. I'll jump in when there's things that we can add, but a lot of, especially the historical things, he's more up on, oh, here's.
Okay, first slide, we got there. This is a quote from Michigan Supreme Court. It actually quoted a prior case from the Court of Appeals. It says, "The Drain Code of 1956 is an exceedingly complex statute, the provisions of which are apparently known by few in the profession and understood by far fewer." There's, it's funny, because I do work in, you know, I think we have probably over 100 attorneys at Clark Hill in Michigan. Honestly, nobody knows what I do. They don't. And when I pull them in, they're like, "Oh, you do that? You do environmental? You do construction? You do real estate? Oh, okay." But it is, it's a procedural statute, a financing statute, and it's, you each have one. It's quite thick, and as we'll learn as we go along, this is a statute that's been built from the early 1800s, and there's a lot of arcane language in there. You don't really see in statutes very often anymore. Next. So, the Drain Code establishes the creature called the Drain Commissioner, or the Water Resource Commissioner now. It formalizes the powers and duties of the Drain Commissioner, including the duties or the power to create drainage districts, which we'll explain, and we have some examples of those. Manage storm water, including flood control and water quality, which is, I'd say, a relatively new thing over the last 20 or 30 years. Before that, they were just moving water from point A to point B to get it out of farm fields or out of neighborhoods or whatever, to assess the cost, which we'll be talking about later in our presentation. That's for drain improvements and maintenance of drains, and of course oversee the construction and maintenance of the drains. Next. Okay, we thought it important to provide some history, a little bit of history context as to where, how we got where we are as a, in Michigan. So, the first drainage laws were, originated over 200 years ago. There was a surveyor sent by, I think it was President, who I don't, the President at that time, in 1860, and the surveyor general, Edward Tiffin, really didn't like Michigan. He said, "The intermediate space between, intermediate space between the swamps and lakes, which is probably nearly one half of the country, is, in very few exceptions, a poor barren sandy land on which scarcely any vegetation grows except very small scrubby oaks. The abandonment of colonization," of Michigan, "is urged as being dangerous and unnecessary." There was another surveyor before him, and I don't have his name, but he talked about, it's a French surveyor in the Detroit area, who said, "It's not worth settling there. It's nothing but swamps full of mosquitoes and disease." So, that, you know, welcome to Michigan. That was, that's how this all started. But then Louis Cass, you might, may have heard the name, he's a famous, he was a governor of Michigan Territory and then became governor of the state when it became a state, started taking a look at some of the uplands, you know, probably Berry County, and urged the President to reassess and send new surveyors to see what could be done. So, in 1819, they returned and really started taking a better look at the land and what could be done. In 1819.
Next.
Oh, sorry. Thank you. 1819, authorize highway supervisors construct drains to protect the roadways. This is on the federal level. In 1827, on the state level, established a procedure to resolve land drainage conflict between property owners. That was apparently a big problem. In 1839, Michigan codifies the territorial drain rates, orders, as state statutes. So, that's when it starts originating, right there. 1846, drain laws justified on the basis of public health. That's really the genesis of the first Drain Code, around 1846. In 1847, there were three Drain Commissioners appointed in Lenawee County. Lenawee County is down there by Monroe. It's the next county over. Those are township Drain Commissioners at the time, which we'll talk about a little bit. And the big one was the, on the federal level, the Swamp Act. U.S. federal law granted swamp and overflow lands to states, enabling them to reclaim and develop these areas. And I just added on here, and we're going to go back to the swamp land, just, how it works, okay. Just by way of, you know, reference, there was a lot of flooding problems. In the Great Flood of 1875, the entire city of Lansing was basically under, what was it, six feet of water? Okay. Then it lost every bridge over the Grand River and the Red Cedar Rivers. Next. Oh, that's me. Okay.
Nope.
Did I skip one?
Try that again.
Oh, no, that's it, Swamp Land. Okay, so the federal government, you know, Michigan wasn't the only one state with a problem of, you know, having a very wet, wet territory to deal with. They made an effort to, this is before we realized the benefits of wetlands. They made an effort to basically start reclaiming the land. They granted wetlands to states who could then transfer them to individuals to drain the land. A lot of times, these lands would be transferred to veterans of the war, in the War of 1812 or other conflicts, and it'd be a way to compensate the soldiers for their service to the country. 14 states participated in this program, including Michigan. I listed some of them out here. And 6 million acres were transferred to Michigan, to ultimately transferred to private ownership. I've listed some of the counties. I did find a record of Berry County being part of this transfer. It didn't provide me with how many acres, but we think it was probably Blackman Swamp area and probably some others. There used to be down by the Gunn River, there used to be onion fields, and it was very swampy down there. I suspect that those were probably part of it, too. Next, that's me. Okay. Want to be in charge of it?
I'll try.
Good, thanks. I think we're good.
I'll try.
Where are we now? 1857, we're moving forward. We're not going to go through, you know, all 200 years. The county level Drain Commissioner structure introduced for maintenance and authorized drains for the first time. Then, because at that time, there were township Drain Commissioners, I think that by 1897, they realized it's really difficult to manage, to deal with multiple townships, sorry, hard enough as it is today to deal with cross-county, inter-county drains, but at that time, just unmanageable. So, in 1897, the authority was consolidated at the county level. And then in 1923, I'll put this down, this is the last major codification of the Drain Code from the late 1800s, early 1900s. This is really the genesis of the modern day 1956 Drain Code, which I have here, and you all have a copy of it.
This was the township book, and that's.
Oh, that's a good, yeah, we brought visual effects.
Once they transferred from the townships, everything got moved over into the county books, and we got these, and they're really, really cool. If anybody wants to try to read them, good luck. Rows that used to be in equalization could read them. Some of them are in Boy Scout language. I don't know exactly what that means, but that's what she told me. All the routes and courses and yada, 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 and they're beautiful handwriting, but I can't read them, a lot of them.
We don't use cursive anymore. I don't think we all know cursive, but it's beautiful writing in some of these. If you're interested, take a look when you're, when we're done. Again, 1923 organized into 19 chapters. I think we're up to 25, but the 19 chapters are really very similar to what's in the present-day code. So, you know, we're talking about a statute that's over 100 years old, not really too much different. So, there's been, that said, there's been over 200 amendments and changes, you know, small changes along the way since 1956, which is the last major codification. And since then, you know, I lived through one attempt to completely change the law. It was in 1996, and it just got bogged down, and nobody really has a better idea on how to do this. And then maybe also because the Drain Code does solve a lot of land use issues for a state like Michigan. So, I have not seen any major efforts since then. I was a younger man back then. I didn't participate that much, but I do remember people in Lansing being frustrated over trying to get any changes done. The next ones, next couple slides, we included, trying to make, John, trying to make this as exciting as we can, there's some old photographs of some drainage techniques. I think they're kind of cool, like, you know, these are 1800s, early 1900s, you know, we didn't have the heavy machinery. You'd see the horses pulling, what are those mechanisms that cut the drains?
Dredge lines.
Yeah.
Drudges.
Drudges.
Yeah, they have horses on the dredge and horses on the trailer hauling the wood and...
And that was this program, it's not in our packet here, but it was called the WPA. It was a jobs program from the Depression era, and you'll find that throughout, in many counties, there were a lot of these drains established and created, physically created, not legally, but physically created by workers who needed jobs. It was a job program during the Depression, so a lot of, you know, not glamorous ditch digging work back in that time.
A little bit of quick history on Little Thorn Apple. I know John can appreciate this. When they did the Little Thorn Apple back in 1926, they dynamited the outlet of Jordan Lake to set a dredge down in there. And that dredge, from what we understand, is all the way at the end of the Coldwater River where it broke down, and that was the end of the drain.
Cable's still there.
And it's still there, pieces of it, yeah.
And a couple more pictures. I'm going to share something here, I think would be the appropriate time. The, I was in Gresham County. Gresham County's near, almost in Gresham County, Ithaca, Michigan, right in the middle of the state, very flat, very agricultural area. Two things about it. One, they have the Maple River there, which is a river that actually creeps up a mile about every two or three years, a mile on either side, and they can't control it. They did try to do a flood control program one time, and it just couldn't, you can't really control something like that. So, it does give you, you know, the, sort of envision, you know, the challenges that Michigan has, it's just flat land, water doesn't move very fast there, and when it, we get the heavy rains in the spring or the snow melt, that river will just go up and stay up and claim land, and then it goes back down. You never hear about it because people are used to it. That's what, they just deal with it. They don't build in those areas. Another story from Gresham, I was going through, I can't remember, it was township book or county book. We were looking at the records for a legal proceeding, and I found this discussion about how a judge was walking through the lands with a jury behind him to compensate the owners for the land taken on behalf of the government. And, you know, eminent domain matters, and he would just, they would cut him a check right there in the field, and that was the end of the case. That was, I just found that interesting. It was the strangest thing, a guy in a robe walking through the fields with 12 jurors behind him to figure out how much the land is worth. So, next, we are.
This is why we deal with DEQ Eagle.
Yeah. Okay, so that's kind of the history. Now, we're going to smash cut to present day, really, although some of these are older statutes. There's a number of statutes that we have to deal with, which is fine, you know, it's, designed to protect the environment and people's rights, so that's a good thing. There was in 1970, the Environmental Protection Act, '72 Clean Water Act, that's a big one for us. We do, the Clean Water Act is administered in our state and, I think, New Jersey, maybe one others, on the state level. In our state, it's Eagle. You've heard that word, it used to be called MDEQ. So, we get our permits, as does do developers or anyone else getting permits. They get them, instead of going to, on the federal level, they go right to the state. When the federal government designates a, the administration of an act, what they adopted in Michigan is called the National Resources and Environmental Protection Act, it's got to be, it can't be less restrictive than the Clean Water Act, but it can be more restrictive. So, in our state, it is more restrictive, in other words. I think the thinking then, and we'll go through that a little bit, was, you know, we love our, we love our lakes, we love our, we love our water, we love Michigan, and we're going to do everything we can to protect it. So, that's, you know, it does create challenges in permitting and moving water and getting projects done, but, you know, that's, we know the statutory scheme, we operate within it. And these statutes, the other ones listed, In the Lakes and Stream Act, Soil Erosion, Wetlands Protection Act, all have been subsumed by NARA, what I call NARA, Natural Resources and Environmental Protection Act. That's, they're all in there now, and that's the statutory scheme that we have to comply with. Next, me, you.
Stock.
Stock.
Hit that.
Bang it on the table.
Have me turn that.
It works for me.
So, you have to hit that, and then, I'll use the batteries. Well, Martin.
Help.
Next.
Reboot.
Next one?
Yep.
Got one?
Oops. No.
You were right there.
Close, one before that. Yeah. Okay. Statuary rolls a dream of the many hats of a Drain Commissioner. He can be, not American, frequently is the Soil Erosion Sedimentation Control Officer, County Enforcement Agent, and that's kind of, what do we use it?
Berry County has, zoning does.
Zoning does it?
SC.
Okay. Often the, not necessarily, but often, the delegated authority for In the Lake Projects. I really only know one that is not the Drain Commissioner, and if you're all familiar with the dam that broke in Midland and Gladwin County, they have a board instead of the Drain Commissioner, but the Drain Commissioner... commissioner. But the drain commissioners of the two counties actually sit on that board. They're the delegated authority. Statutorily, on the County Parks and Recreation Commission, each of these is statute, I won't say that anymore, but he's on the county public board, he or she, on the County Board of Public Works, on lake improvement boards pursuant to Part 309. And he has to approve the drainage plans for land division and plats.
That's how we ended up doing the stormwater, because in the 90s, Bob Schaefer came forward to have the stormwater set at the drain office because we already had to do any plat reviews. So that's how we got shoved into that one.
Next. Could you briefly jump ahead two slides and then go back? Okay, these aren't depictions of drainage districts. You really, okay, this is operator error on my part. You know, honestly, I had a hard time making a good slide out of these, but that's just the depiction. As you can see, the one on the left is sort of a plan set, the one on the right is a satellite vision. On the, I guess on my left, as I'm looking at it, you will see the drain in blue. And really, what that is, is a depiction of the topography of the land that every happy little drop of rainwater within those lines, oh, you got a better one, okay. It'll make its, it'll make its way into the drain. So it's the highest point within the district. It also, as we'll talk about later, will generally form the basis for a special assessment district. Okay, so if we could now, sorry, visually.
A way to look at a drain district, the simplest is Chris Kozmowski explained, you got the Rocky Mountains. Everything to the east is the Atlantic Drain District. Everything to the west is the Pacific. That's the simplest way to round it out. All that water goes one way or the other. And in all our districts, it's the same idea, where that water, if we had numerous flood, would go.
Okay. So now we're in the sort of narrative part of our presentation. What's a drainage district? It's made up of lands, as I said, that contribute to the drain, contribute stormwater, also acts as special assistance jurisdiction. And each drainage district is a statute of public body corporate. It is an independent legal entity. It can sue or be sued, it can enter into contracts, it can break contracts, it can acquire property, arms-length easiness fee, or by eminent domain, or otherwise known as condemnation. It can borrow money into finance projects. It can, and before I jump ahead here, the drain commissioner is sort of, you know, the mayor of each one. He's the one who signs all this stuff on behalf of the district, but it is the district that is the legal entity, not the drain commissioner. And the drainage district also allow these special assessments for maintenance improvements to drains. All right, the next one, you know, I added this, it's not the best picture. This is supposed to be a, well, it is, it's a map of the major watersheds. And I kind of want to include this because you could see the, all the watersheds in Michigan, there's a lot of them, I don't know how many. But within each one of those is these sub sort of watersheds, which are generally the drainage districts. I think in Berry County, we're in the Grand River watershed and the Kalamazoo, is that it?
Yep.
Okay. So depending on where your land is, it'll either flow to the Kalamazoo or the Grand River and then outlet in Lake Michigan. All right, we can jump ahead.
Do you want questions as we go, or would you rather?
I don't mind. Do you? No, fine, fire away.
You just indicated that each drainage district is an independent public body with drain commissioner serving as the administrative officer.
Yep.
Who's the governing body?
The drain commissioner.
Yeah.
Okay, that's a great question.
It's a public body, but it's a one person.
Yeah. I mean, when you say public body, that's the words out of the statute. A municipality is a public body, county is a public body, and drainage districts, boy, can I think of any others? But, you know, I'm glad you asked because if you have an inter-county drain, then you have, and I kind of left this out, there's a drainage board. So we have, take Gunriver, for example, the Gunriver inter-county drain. The drain commissioners on the board are Elegant, Berry, and then someone from the Michigan Department of Agriculture is the chair. In that instance, generally speaking, the drain commissioners decide things. If they can't agree, the only time M-DAR can really vote to, say, have a project or condemn land by eminent domain is if they're breaking a tie. But going back to your question, who's the, in that instance, it's the board that's in charge of the drainage district.
On the interior.
Yep. John?
Doug?
Yes.
I see in here that the drain commissioner can borrow money, and there's times that you come before us to borrow money.
Yeah, for full...
Really, that's to get a better interest rate, right?
Correct. It's 100% to help the people.
But, say if we voted it down, you could still borrow the money?
Correct.
Yeah. I don't know that I've ever seen it, but I am told that the interest rate just, we can still borrow, or the interest by the financial institutions might not be as great, so we'll wind up with a not as good a deal for the landowners in the district.
You talk to the banks, and they like the looks of that, even though it's basically a technicality because the county's on the hook for it anyway, so.
Just wanted to make sure I understood it right.
We're in touch, we're in touch on that toward the end, too.
I think I know the answer to this, but who governs the drain commissioners? Who do the drain commissioners report to?
The people.
The drain commissioners elected one of those positions, sheriff, clerk, you know, no different than them. They're, the answer, you got a bit, there's another quote from, I can't remember, Supreme Court or Court of Appeals, it said, "If you don't like the drain commissioner, the way to solve it is at the ballot box." So, something like that. Not a direct quote. All right, where's my little graph? Okay, this is Jim's graph. You want to do this one? You do this one?
All right. You got three different ways of working on projects. You got maintenance, and this year, the legislature just increased the maintenance amount that we can spend every year on a drain to do maintenance and repairs. It used to be $5,000 a mile up until this last year. Now they bumped it to $10,000 per mile plus the cost of living.
CPI, Consumer Price Index increases, yeah.
And basically, if you got a, and it's per mile or incremental miles. So if you got a 5.2 mile drain, you can actually spend $30,000 a year, no questions asked. And some of these projects, I'm sure they go there.
Wait a minute, wait.
Yeah. Where'd you go?
Say that again, Jim. Okay, first off, you round up, okay, but if it's 5.2 is six, you could spend $60,000.
Yeah, now it's...
Plus, yeah.
I'm still...
I know, it's early, but...
Now, if you get complaints and you got to do a bigger project, you can also, next step is you go to the townships. Any township that has, is responsible for 20% or more of the assessment, you can get a resolution to exceed for them. And basically, you go to them and say, "Look, the work that needs to be done can't be done in our maintenance limit. Will you guys authorize us to exceed it?" We've had a number of them that I've had. We just did the Thornapple Drain One that goes all the way from Nashville to Thornapple Lake. We went to Maple Grove, we went to Castlin, and we went to the Village of Nashville and said, "Look, we could do this work under maintenance. We can do, at that time, 30,000 a year for 10 years, spend 300,000, and we've got a contract that we can do the whole thing." The bad thing is, you're going to spend more every time you have the contract to come back, because every year he has to mobilize, and that costs a lot of money. Second of all, the people are going to pay the same amount every year, but the ones on the upper end ain't going to get relief for 10 years. And they all say, "Yep, we get that idea, we're saving money, we do it all at once." GEI came in with pulleys and chainsaws and cleared everything through there, and we're looking at about $300,000, and that'll be spread out over 200, or over 10 years. That's one of them cases where economies of scale helps out for the people and for the end cost to all these projects. We also had, we've done that on Early Curtis. Early Curtis, I required the farmer that wanted the work done to go get me five signatures, which would qualify it as a petition. And then I talked to the township, and they agreed, "Yep, it's a lot cheaper." If you do a petition project, you have to hire the engineers to go out and do the surveys and design a whole system. And you got it, you got more legal, you got a lot of soft costs that, under maintenance or resolution to exceed, that you don't have to do it. And if you got a tile that's X size and you're wanting to upsize at one size, you don't need an engineer to figure all that stuff out. Yes, sir.
Do you need permits on maintenance and petition?
It depends.
Well, we're going to get into our exemptions later.
Yeah.
But, like you said, depends.
Yeah, yeah, I'm going to try to describe some of those exemptions, and we try to use the exemptions wherever we can, because permitting process can be timely and costly, you know, so.
And then, of course, the third one is a petition project. Now, on a new drain, it's funny that the way they got it set up, on a new drain, you have to do a Chapter Three and a Chapter Four. And basically, the Chapter Three, the engineer, you know, we go out and we look at the project and see if it can be done at some kind of a reasonable cost. And if so, then we go back to the people, and they write a petition to get us to do a board of determination. Now, the board of determination says, and I think I got it clipped down here, and the difference between a Chapter Four and a Chapter Eight is, if you have an existing petition, you only need five people in the district to sign a piece of paper. It's very, very, very low bar. In a new petition, you have to have five people in the district and five people in the township. Now, they can all tend be in the district, but you don't have to have them all in the district. And that's a much, it's a little bit harder, not a whole hell lot. But what, and then, if we get a petition, we'll clip it on the right page. Basically, it says...
There you go.
There's my petitions. Drain Code says, "As soon as practical after the filing of a petition, the commissioner authorized to act on the petition, if not disqualified under Section 381 to make the appointment of benefits, may appoint a board of determination composed of three disinterested people. They have to own property in the county, but they cannot own property in the district." I don't have to do the board of determination. We found this out from Stacy at Fahy Schultz. If I'm in the district, I can't set the board of determination. But if it's Tuesday and I just don't want to do it, I can present it to the drain, the chairman of the commissioners, and he must set the board of determination. We've had one of those. I was in the Davis Drain, and I couldn't do it, so I gave the petition to Ben Geiger, and he picked the board of determination. So there is, it doesn't, it isn't only disqualified, but then I got to have a good reason to say, "Yeah, it's Tuesday, I just didn't feel like it." So, so that is one of the things that people have argued back and forth, but it is, it can be done that way. So the petition project...
You want, like, we're getting ahead of ourselves, okay.
Okay.
Let's go to the next slide, if we could. I'm going to highlight, Jim's talked about a lot of this, but we're going to highlight a couple of things real quick. We got the maintenance limitations. As Jim said, it was recently increased from 5,000. I remember when I was a younger man, it was at 1250, then sometime in the late 90s, 2,500, and I want to say, I don't know, 2008 maybe, up to 5,000. And now, recently, in the last two years, I think, it went to 10. So who knows where we're going, you know? Seems to double every, I don't know, seven and a half years, give or take. Okay, maintenance refers to physical onset repairs. Importantly, note that the maintenance limitation, the dollar amount, did not apply to dollars spent on consultants such as engineers, attorneys, wetlands specialists, whatever we need to get this, get the through. And we talked about the municipal. If we go to next, and we'll hit some highlights here.
Come on.
Oh, we have the...
Next.
Blowing it. Ah, there we go. Okay. Okay. Okay, one of the things, these are two examples of provisions we try to use to save landowners' money. One is for the, if a municipality performs a work and does not charge the drainage district, the maintenance limits don't apply. And I like the next example, I really like, maybe dozens of examples, or I could provide dozens of examples, but we recently saved the landowners over one of them, $1.5 million in the, I think, Watson District by using M-DAR, relationships with M-DAR that allowed us to put a newer culvert in. And maybe you can explain, you know, I wasn't on the ground, but that was a pretty good deal for the landowners there.
We got Jim Davis to pay for the new culvert and the second turtle culvert and the resetting of the sewer line. It came in, we're guessing, between 1.4 and 1.5 million. Their plans were to put an eight-by-14 box culvert in, raise the road five feet. We figured that was probably three to four million dollar job, so we saved them money, and none of the cost went on the district. So we were real happy about that.
All right.
You got better luck tonight.
All right, we're fighting with each other, I think, okay. Next thing, we're talking about improvements and establishment of a new drain or a redo. This is anything that is, this is going to cost, these are the larger projects, things that cost significant amount of money. Jim touched on it, you can have five free holders in the district, sign a petition, they have to be liable for an assessment, okay? Then they have to own land. Municipalities can file a petition. Townships, cities, villages can sign a petition and submit it to the drain commissioner for improvements. Road commissions, in certain circumstances, and Eagle, I'm very, 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 I've only seen one Eagle petition in 30s, whatever, years. So that was unusual case, and given how that went and all the lawsuits that came after it, I don't think we'll see it anytime soon.
As Doug and me...
Go ahead, Tom.
Watson, we got a petition that Sharon Ritchie got signed in a matter of a couple hours, and there was 10 people right there on a whole drive that all signed that petition, turned it in. That was the quickest, and that was an existing drain, so they only needed five. The Cloverdale Project, the road commission actually petitioned that because every time M-43 Road had to be closed for flooding, that forced more cars onto the county roads, and the county road commission was not real keen on it, and it was awful poor. The reroute was down Guernsey Lake Road and down Stevens Road, and it was just not a good reroute for traffic. So they petitioned that one, which they have the legal right to do.
Okay. We did, Jim touched on a lot of this, but I want to highlight a couple of things. This is about the board of determination, you know, as Jim said, the drain commissioner gets the petition, tries to find three disinterested property owners who are willing to give away an evening to sit and listen to people who want or don't want an improved drain, and for almost nothing, their mileage. So they decide whether the project is necessary or not necessary. I don't know how deep I want to go into that, but it's based on the, whether the project is conducive to the public health convenience or welfare... So if you have an existing drainage district and the surveyor say, well, you know, we got a whole, we got 20 acres over there that actually drains to the land, we're gonna add it in. You can do it by the board of determination, but there's a process for the drain commissioner to do it later, but we're not gonna get into that. And then we talked about when the petition's sent to the board chair. So, next. Okay, here we go. This is, it's supposed to be a flow chart. Okay, this is what lawyers come up with, will try to mess with this, whatever, what is this thing called? I don't know, whatever, PowerPoint. Okay, it goes down, petition, necessity, if it's, if it's a go, they find necessity, then you get to the design phase. After the design phase, you do, I put easement acquisition, really should say land acquisition, more, you know, 95% of the time it's easements, though. The next one says, it's supposed to say permitting, Eagle permitting, I don't know what happened there, sorry about that. So then you get to, you get your Eagle permit, you know the project, you know the scope of the project, you get to bid the project, you have a day of review or apportionment. That's when, you know, this is something that I think one of the gentlemen here was interested in, is you notice that up and the drain commissioner, it's the hardest job, the rest of the job's fun, this is the hardest part, when you have to, you know, assess people. So a lot of thought goes into that, and we're gonna get into the details of that a little bit more. Then you get to financing, of course, and then finally you build it, so. We do want to touch on a unique, another, we highlight this because this is, this is also great for the landowners. If Walmart comes in or a developer's building a subdivision, in lieu of a petition to establish the drain as a, as part of an existing drain or as a new drain, they, we can enter in an agreement, 425, 433 doesn't mean anything to you, it's, it's what we call them, it's just the section in the code, that's all it is. But it's a, it's an agreement with the landowner to establish a drain. They gotta give us a shiny, brand-new operating drain and a deposit to take care of it. And you add it to the existing drainage district and it allows for either that to be established as part of that drainage district or a new drainage district. We're seeing more and more of these in counties. You know, in the more urbanized area, I, we do them all the time, when a developer goes in, builds a new subdivision or whatever, so.
We just did Mid-Villa and that turned, ended up the simplest solution for the builder and for us was a 433, where they, they design a whole thing, give us Azbits, give us the Mylar, give us a deposit and say, okay, now it's your baby.
So the next slide gets into those details.
I got one. John's got a question, I got a question.
Yep.
Do you have to okay the 433, seeing you're the one in charge here?
Yup.
Do you do it?
And that's.
So then it's your baby, after you okay.
We have to take it on. And we have, Lauren went through 132 of these that have been done previously and 17 of them are complete. But we're still on hook for them because a lot of things didn't get done in the past that should have been done. And the developers should have been forced into it.
So this is not unique to Berry. We, when we review records, we find these 433 agreements, for example. It says right in the agreement, the developer has to give us easements. And I'm not gonna, let's see, I'll pick on a different county, we'll use Gratchute again. We sometimes look, where's the easements? They never turn them over. So then we, you know, then we get into, do we really have an established drain? Or we might find something that's not signed and we always thought it was for, but now we're able to go through the records and we're, we're cleaning them up. I think we're in pretty good shape, I don't, you know, given, it's not uncommon, Berry County's not alone. I've got one county, Manassay County, oh my God, they couldn't find the records, they're, they were in the old drain commissioner's basement, there was water damage to them and it's just a mess, so, yeah.
We got one that a builder did. And I called the engineer and said, what got done here? He said, oh, that got built. We got the Mylar, but it wasn't complete and now we're gonna have to go back and do it and then assess that to the people that it should have been taken care of in the development.
Do them people that end up having to pay for it have any repercussions on suing the builder?
Yes, but you can't find them. I mean, it's available, start an LLC and they fold it up and they disappear in North Carolina, or whatever.
I got, well, I just got one, of course, let's back up a second. Who determines who owns a drain district as far as taxpayers?
Basically, the engineers draw the district. And if your water can't get out, then you're in. I mean, that's the simplest way, it's kinda like a bowl. They'll find a high point and it's pretty jagged, especially with the new LiDAR that we got. And it's accurate within one foot. And they draw a circle around there and show the outlet. And we've had places where, you know, the water had to get five feet to get out of there or 10 feet or 20 feet. But, you know, if you had Noah's flood, where would your water go? Would it go in or would it go out? And that gets real ticklish. And I don't think we've had one day of review that we didn't have to go out onsite to double-check things because somebody will bring something to us. And that gets into the factors of the assessments, because if you got somebody that's got a big hole on your property and 90% of their water's gonna go, well, it ain't, he ain't really letting as much water off as his neighbor that's got a hill like this.
Anybody on the high ground would be pushing water downhill.
A myriad of factors that go into these and it's, you know.
I've always been curious about the radius of how it went out.
Yeah, back in the day, they would have to go survey, I mean, it was time-consuming, expensive. Now we can use LiDAR. So, and the other thing, if you come in, see your land, you come in for the day of review and say, you know, my water doesn't go that way, it goes that way, we'll send an engineer out or a surveyor, figure out a particular land, make sure that that LiDAR line is correct. But they're pretty good with the GIS and the LiDAR, I mean, it saves money, a lot of money, but with these new technologies.
Or there may be a culvert that nobody picked out or vice versa.
Yeah, that's a good one.
There isn't a culvert. There, it, we spend a lot of time on that double-checking. If somebody comes in and, the simplest one we had was blockers came in and said, wait a minute, if this drain goes that way, everybody else can tile directly to it, I only got one outlet, shouldn't I get, and we reduced it a little bit, you know, I mean, it's only fair, so.
What is LiDAR?
Laser Imaging Data AR.
It, I don't know how to describe it. It is a layered, I don't know, what is it, satellite imagery?
They can fly it over and they shoot with lasers down. And it's very, very, very accurate.
And they can tell the bottom of a drain like within an inch or two. It's pretty remarkable, you know.
Great, wonderful.
They use it in cars. Cars have LiDAR, some, not all, but new ones. And it detects if somebody's continuing to blow or an object that's heading forward, also detects vehicles in front of you to tell you how the car is set up, whether or not. So that's, I think some police force use, big city, big city.
It, in, back in the day, before we had LiDAR, typically your, your topography was within 10 feet of, in grade, and that makes a lot of difference. And in the old district, way back when, they basically took your whole property and said, well, you got three acres in, the whole forties in. And we, and in, what was it, 2012 or 13? Previous to that, you had to have a petition to reset the district. After that, you can set it basically whenever you want to clean up rolls, because we've had rolls that the same acreage was in four different districts. And you're paying on four different drains for the same water and it's like, so Russ Yager was instrumental in doing a lot of them in Berry County. He did a number of days of review trying to clean that up. He said, ain't much fun to get the same bill for the same property.
All right, well, we got the next handful of slides are apportionments and after that is lake levels, so we're gonna.
We're gonna take a, we're gonna take about a five to seven minute break before we dive into apportionments.
Very good.
For our coffee-drinking commissioners here, so.
I just noticed the back of your shirt. Stretch.
The board will come back in session. You may continue, sir. Thank you.
All right. Here we're, uh...
What page are you on?
Twenty-six. Aportions. Okay. The drain assessments are based on the principle of benefit derived. The case law said there's no mathematical formula and it's got to be in the sound judgment of the drain commissioner or the drainage board. You know, I wish there was a better way. There's not. We've tried. There's just, you know, there's a lot of factors to look at. I mean, there's land use. You know, should someplace that's, say, got a lot of pavement and rooftops, they got, I'll pick on Walmart again, they, you know, they're contributing a lot more to the drain because of the impervious surface and the runoff than an agricultural field. So those are some things you look at. Some other factors might be proximity to the drain and some other things, but, you know, I, um, that's, that's the general principle. So, yeah, the, um, the apportionment must always be 100% of the cost of the drain, obviously. Otherwise, you can't pay for it. There are, the good thing is, there are other sources of money for typically for these drain projects.
Didn't do it.
Fail.
You try it.
Marla? Help?
Please?
One slide. There you go. Um, we can, the drain commissioners in whatever county can assess the, for benefit to the county, for the benefit of county roads. Uh, but the assessment does go to the county and pursuant to the drain code, the county may pass on 50% of the cost to the road commission. They can also assess, I don't have it in here, but municipal roads. We run into that sometimes. And that's based on a, in MDOT. And if you can get MDOT in a drainage district, it's great. They, they seem to have decent amount of money and they pay and they pay in advance. It works wonderfully. Uh, that's also based, all of these road issues are based on runoff calculations that I'm not going to pretend that I understand. It is wild mathematical formula, but it, it comes out to a significant amount of money.
Engineering.
That saves landowners money in the end, I think. The next slide. If we can get there. Then the, um, you know, it's, it can be a little tougher on township, general law townships to provide assessments. You know, it seems like, um, charter townships have a better ability to raise money. I'm not a township expert, though, but certainly we do, you know, you, we will, or the drain commissioner will assess the township based on, at large, based on concept of public health. What is public health? Public health is if there's water in a, you know, say, over a road that creates, you got, ambulances can't get through, or there's standing water that has mosquitoes or airborne illnesses, that's a public health concern. You got to get it out of there. So, and that type of thing. And there's a, there's a few other examples, but the, again, no mathematical formula. I think, Jim, what are you at with your townships?
Typically, typically, we take the number of townships and get, say, you got two townships, you spread 20% on two townships. If you got three townships, you do 30%, and then that's by acreage. It's the simplest way we've kind of come up with. It probably could be heavier on some of them. Watson's a perfect example where there was so much health benefits because of the flooding. Down there on Oak Drive, there were wells that we were afraid were going to be inundated with water because the wells were low. Thank God, there's sewer around there, but even the sewer, uh, tanks, like Sharon Ritchie's, they actually sandbagged around there. And Scott Monroe agreed that, you know, they'd have a problem if any of them pumps went down because the sewer, the, the lake water would go into them, could go into them sewer tanks. They're supposed to be sealed, but if you had to open it up, you'd be pretty much stuck. And we had Oak Drive that was underwater. We had East Shore Drive that was underwater. Few other roads that were, I mean, totally underwater. We had a lot of people. And we got a lot of slides of numbers of homes that were in the water, underwater. It was, that Watson was a real bad deal all the way around.
But you're saying that if it's a million dollar project and it was one township, you would assess them $100,000 or 10%?
Correct.
But if there's two townships, you're going to assess 20% to the townships?
Yeah.
At $200,000?
At $200,000. And then the percentage that each one pays, we figured roughly on acreage in that township, how much benefit. And there, you know, there's, there's a lot of the things that you look at. I mean, if you got flooded homes, it's detrimental to your resale value. Michael Brown asked me about the counties and I showed him one house, um, just trying to put, you know, trying to get your head around it, because it's a bit trying to figure out, you know, how much township should pay and how much people should pay. There's a house on East Shore Drive, a nice brick home that sold for $213,000 in 2013. In '20, when it was flooded, it sold for $20,000. And in '24, after they remodeled it, it sold for $270,000. So I told him, I said, "That's a $200,000 swing on that one home. And the county gets 5.67 mils per thousand. So that's $6,000 a year that county is going to lose by not having that home where it's unflooded." And we had a lot of homes that were in that same boat. And he said, "Yeah, okay, I guess I can understand where the county benefits by getting this fixed." So, and of course, the roads, I mean, if you can't, like Doug said, you can't get an ambulance down there, you can't get a fire truck. Um, Oak, Oak Drive was underwater. You know, they don't want to come down through there with a fire truck to save the house further down in the winter when there's ice across the road. It just, it was a mess. We had, I mean, we had Watson backed all the way up into Glassby and into Pleasant and Mud Lake because when the water gets that high, none of that stuff works. It's just flat. And the highest we recorded is 928.75, which is higher than the legal lake level that we set at Pleasant Lake. So, just a bad deal.
Am I in the right slide? Glasses. Why is that one there? Oh, what happened? We want to go back. Okay. Real quick on these apportionments. Let's see, apportionment is, the apportionment rule is created. The drain commissioner will hold a day review of apportionments and provide notice by mail, publication, for all the landowners to come in and argue with the drain commissioner that they're not paying enough money. No, it's a joke. That their assessment's too high. So, you know, I mean, um, or that, you know, I don't benefit in it at all, or I don't benefit as much as the guy across the street, or whatever it is. And the good thing is, you know, the drain commissioner has the authority to adjust the rule based on what he hears. And then at the end, he can, he sets the rule. An aggrieved landowner, this is this long paragraph, too long to read right now, but it, or city, township, whom out of the county, can appeal and the probate, to the probate court of all things. Some counties, you take the appeal to the probate court and they're saying, "What is this? I don't do this." And, you know, then you say, "Well, you know, this is one of your functions. You have to do these drain appeals." They form a board of review to hear the, hear the arguments of the landowner. And then the, ultimately, the board of review's decision is final. There's no appeal from that. And the, for what it's worth, the standard is whether there's a manifest area of inequality in the apportionments. Okay. Here we go. Lake levels.
This is you guys' favorite part.
This is supposed to be an area of Gun Lake, kind of mangled, though, but that's what it would look like if you stretched it. But we did this one, I don't remember, many years ago. It needed a new dam, but that's...
2017.
Yeah. Okay. Good memory. So this is important for the county because it's a county initiative, really. I mean, everything is in the county's name, you know, you do, when you, when you, you guys, well, I'll start at the beginning. Typically, to get these started, I don't know if I've ever seen a landowner petition where, because the landowners have to get 2/3 of the land, signature from, the owners of 2/3 of the land are budding the lake. That's a, that's a tough putt to get that. The other way to start a lake level project is by motion to the board of commissioners. The board of commissioners may require, doesn't have to require, a preliminary study to determine the feasibility of establishing the lake level and maintaining the legal lake levels of the lake. And the county may, I think this is important, require a cash payment, but that would be from a petition, really. So you, it really starts at the county level. And then, based on the preliminary study, and if it's feasible, the code says you can direct prosecutor or legal counsel to petition the court for further proceedings to determine the lake level. And ultimately, the other decision you make is that it should be, you don't accept the special assessment district, but you say there's got to be a special assessment district to defray the cost of the project. And then that special assessment, uh, assessment district is later confirmed by the circuit court. I'm going to jump ahead. Two slides.
One, one thing on the lake level that's kind of strange is the circuit court sets the district. They say, "Yep, these people are in." They do not set the percentages for the people to pay. That goes through the drain office. We figure out what we think is good, and then that comes back to the commissioners to sign off. And to Ted's question on Pine Lake, the second step never got done when they were going through the court proceedings in the '90s on Pine Lake. So there are a number of properties that have a 0% because it never came back to the commissioners to get confirmed.
So, didn't you say earlier that you now have the authority, based on the change of the code, to establish a drain district, to modify a drain district?
Drain district. This is lake level.
Lake level. Okay.
The lake level statute says yada, 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 and follow the drain code as close as possible. It's real sloppy.
Yeah.
Yes, sir.
What do you have to do to make that right?
We have to go back through and have the engineers figure out who should be paying, come up with what we think is right, and then bring it to you guys to say, "Yep," or, "No, I think it should be changed."
And then the court has to approve it, too.
They approve the percentage?
Oh, the percentages. I thought you were talking about land.
No, the district, the district was approved by the courts. The percentage was not adjusted.
Does it require action because Pine Lake doesn't have a legal lake level?
They, they do have a legal lake level.
Legal low lake level or something like that?
They have a legal lake. I'm going to say that.
What's this mean?
Well, they have a level that says the normal level is 890.5. At one time in '69, it was set as a high level of 891 and a low level that we turned the pump on at 890. In the '90s, they went through six years of court actions and the judge says 890.5 is the normal level with seasonal variations. And currently, it's 891.4. So, but that's, we don't want to go there. We will, we will come to you sometime, maybe this year, and say, "Okay, you guys want us to get started on adjusting them assessments?"
Yeah.
Because there is a whole development on Allegan's side that has never paid anything. Allegan, actually, we found out hasn't paid anything on that in years either. They didn't even know they were in it until this whole debacle we had a few years ago.
Yeah. Barely in, right?
Well, I don't know. They got 40, 45 properties out of 600.
They should be in at the...
They should be. Well, they're in. And they, it says right in their thing that they have needed access and they should be in.
Can make it fair.
And with that one, of course, we'll have to come to you guys and we will have to go to them, which we had to do before on, on, when we were doing anything. So, which is kind of nice because it kind of dumps it on you guys.
Yeah. There you go.
So, this is real quick regarding, um, once this gets through the county board, we, the delegated authority will direct the council to petition the court to set the legal, legal lake level and the special assessment district in order to confirm, confirm them. And then, you know, the, the court can take testimony. Gun Lake was unusual. It had a, it had a lake level for over 100 years, almost 100 years, I think. So it was pretty clear that it worked. They look at Doc's aquatic life, maybe septic fields where those, you know, public health matters to make sure that the legal lake level is correct. So then, once you get to the court action, but I'm going to back up in a minute, but once you get to the court, we come, you know, we set the assessment district, the, or the court sets it, and they set the percentage, but we got to come back to the county board to confirm the assessment role. So you do have a role in that. So, um, like I said at the beginning, everything's done in the name of the county. The court action's in the name of Berry County. The, if we require, acquire easements for the dam, to get to the dam or access or over, probably, those are in the name of the county. This is not the, like, unlike a drainage district. These are all in the name of the county. So this is a county function. You can pick somebody else as the delegated authority. You can pick, and you want to say, you know, the road commission sometimes, it says, or like in Gladwin and Midland, they had a board. But, you know, the statute does first call out the drain commissioner. And it is very common because the drain commissioner's managing water resources, so...
And we can assess.
And you can assess. And they could, yeah, they're accustomed to, they have, you know, the expertise to create the assessment role, too.
Seems more of an oversight function because, I mean...
The delegated authority?
When you say the county board is the final authority to approve the assessment role, you're putting it all together, or the court's putting it all together, and we're basically just approving it at that point.
Yep.
We don't necessarily know the details of what you've done unless you explain it in detail and give it to us.
Right.
So it's more of an oversight and people have the right to come up here, I guess, and get public comment and...
Exactly.
So...
Yeah, I think that's a fair characterization of it, yeah.
Well, it's, it's a, you know, kind of a checks and balances and people don't understand why the drain code takes five, five petitioners and a lake level takes 66%. And the one people I explained to, drain code, we're forced to fix an issue because it's health, convenience, or welfare. Lake levels are for fun. If your boat goes in or out, well, you know, I'm sorry that you can or can't get on the lake, but there's nobody going to drown from that. Nobody, well, they suppose they could drown. Nobody's going to die from it. Nobody's going to have their house totally destroyed, their crops wiped out, the roads flooded, any of that for a recreational use. And that's why, you know, this is kind of a secondary thing.
Yeah. I would just add that I think under the drain code, I have heard it characterized as a minority rights statute, sort of, you know, because you only need five petition. You could have thousands of people in the drainage district, you have five people going to get a project started. And with a lake level, yeah, recreational use, probably, you know, you really don't need to protect the minority. There's no health issue, really, generally speaking. I guess there could be. Okay. We're getting there. Environmental. We got environmental. What do we got? Construction, a little bit of construction and finance, a little bit of financing. So the permits that we have to deal with are floodplain. Anytime you're, you might be affecting, if we're doing work in a floodplain, the department of, it used to be environmental, the department likes to know whether the flood, the floodplain's going to be modified. That's a big deal. They, they, they don't want the floodplain modified because they're, you know, there are FEMA maps and they, they would have to be adjusted and it's, they're just not going to allow it and it could do detriment downstream. Soil erosion, of course, that's sort of a county level permitting. The two big ones are the inland lakes and stream act and the wetlands act. So we do have, or drain commissioners do enjoy exemptions to those, limited exemptions. Frequently, more often than not, though, we do need to get permits for these petition-type projects.
To John's question, we are exempt. If we put, if we restore a drain to its original contour, we are exempt on that. A tile that we replace, no matter where it is, we are exempt, that we don't have to do permits to fix a tile.
I have provided in the next two slides a list of why we need permits. I don't need to roll through all of these except to say, you know, if you're really altering what is in, you know, a lot of drains are inland streams, even though they may be artificial, they still may have aquatic life. So they, they want to know if you're, you can't fill the bottom lands without a permit. You can't place structures in without a permit unless it's like kind, which we'll get into with the exemptions. You can't structurally interfere with the natural flow. So those types of things, we have to be mindful of all those. We have people that, you know, do this professionally that will point out what permits the department may want, talk to the department, have a pre-application need to see if the permit is even necessary because it takes time, a minimum of 90 days, but typically way longer because they'll get extensions. So it slows down, which is, you know, kind of this odd dynamic when you have this public health problem, you know, you have the Department of Environmental Quality sitting on a permit for a year while Rome is burning. And, you know, you got to, that's just the way the process works, so...
Two caveats to our exemptions. One...
We're getting to exemptions. Okay.
Yeah. The little thorn apple, the section north of M43 all the way to Jordan Lake, the east end of M43 crossing, that is mainstream. There's only five of them in the whole state and we are lucky enough to have one. And our exemptions do not work on that drain.
Yeah. Holy water.
And our exemptions are pre-1972 or drains that were permitted after 1972. It gets kind of sticky, but thank God, most of ours are old.
Yeah. That helps. Right. Environmental permit. Part 303 is the wetland section. The department's much more sensitive about working around or near or in a wetland. Anytime you deposit or place fill in a, in a wetland, you need a permit. I had this enforcement action in a county that you'll go unnamed, not Berry. It was escalated to a federal level. The EPA came in and the US Attorney, nice guy, walking in, he just, the way he said it to me is like, you can go into, you know, Lake Erie or whatever, you can take a spoon, you can take dirt out if you want, but the minute you take a spoonful of sand and put it in, you need a permit. So, you know, it's hard to work in a wetland. And then you have to have this detailed plan of what you're doing, mitigation. Sometimes you have to mitigate for working in wetlands. I want to talk about that.
I want to add one thing on that.
Yeah.
Just to show you how protective they are in a wetland, the drain, or the statute says if you're doing a stream or a lake, I believe, they have 30 days to make sure it's complete and then move on. And they have up to 90 days to give you a permit. If they can sneak the word "wetland" in, all bets are off. They can take as long as they want. That's, I mean, that clarifies it.
So we're looking at, you know, drain surface water from a wetland. That's no good. Can't do it. Construct, operate, maintain, or use development of wetland, dredge or remove soil or minerals from a wetland. Those are all things that, if you're going to do it, and you can do it under certain circumstances, but you got to get a permit. So, um, now, the next slide is the exemptions that I pointed out here, maintenance of a drain. If you're just restoring the original fung, well, you already said this, right? You're restoring the original function and capacity. If the drain was constructed or modified before 2014, you can restore to its original contours. So if the drain was established, which is really unusual, I guess, after 2014, you would need a permit in any event.
Yeah.
But you can do bank stabilization, culvert replacement within certain limits, these 24 feet. If anything beyond 24 feet, you need a permit. these 24 feet, um, if anything beyond 24 feet, you need a permit. You're exempt for construction and maintenance of minor drain structures, uh, and for certainly emergency reconstruction of any recently damaged parts of a drain.
Bank stabilization above ordinary high watermark. If you get down into water and you wanna put riprap in there, you're supposed to have a permit. At least there, that's what they're telling us.
Yeah. Well, they always tell you you need a permit.
Well, yeah.
So, it's default. So, that's why we have consultants, because, you know, they'll go up and point out that, you know, this is exempt activity, you know. Construction and bidding, um, I just, I'm gonna point out a few things, and, you know, you can elaborate whatever you want on this construction stuff, but, you know, you have to publicly advertise. You don't have to advertise for maintenance.
No.
The AG has opined on that. For maintenance, although we now, our, the drain commissioners are required to keep a qualified, pre-qualified bidder, uh, list that has to be published, and I don't know how many you got on yours, but I think that, uh, you know, the genesis of that, I think, was, um.
Stupid.
Yeah, so, it's escaping me. A senator in Midland who was, had some issues up there. Um, okay, I think we're on our last topic here. Financing, fun stuff, the financing. I laid this out, I mean, the next two slides of the competition, this is a laundry list of all the things that go into the bucket, so that you have all the costs compiled. The expense of construction, the expense of laying out the district, locating, fees, compensation to boards of review, bridges, attorney fees, engineering costs, what else? Permitting costs, um, probate judge fees, interest on bonds, um, you know, so, um, all that goes into a bucket, and then, once the costs are, are finalized, which is, it's actually, it's harder than you think to put that together, um, the drainage district may proceed with financing. They can either borrow on a bond or a note. Typically, bonds are the larger borrowings. It can be publicly bid or privately placed, if you have a good, you know, if, um, what's the name of the Hastings Bank? No, I'm escaping me.
High Point.
Yeah. A lot of times, they're, for smaller borrowings, it's much more cost efficient to go to a, an institution that's typically, has done a lot of drain borrowings. Then I talked about the full faith and credit of the county earlier, and I think, you know, so we've covered that, that's really important to, you know, help the landowners in the district if, when, when appropriate, if you can give your full faith and credit. And finally, all these borrowings have to comply with federal security statutes. There's a number of things that they have to comply with, but it's, it's a, you know, sophisticated borrowing, and it's published in, in, uh, in Wall Street journals and things like that, so you can actually buy drain bonds if you're interested for their, like municipal bonds, um, so, yeah.
And financing can range. We got, we did Watson, we spent a lot of money with Paul Stoddard, but we got a 1.8% on a 20-year loan. That's damn good interest. We did Cloverdale, and I think we got 4% a year before, so, you know, it can vary how much you can get. But that full faith and credit is technicality that the banks like, they really like that, and it helps the people. You know, if you can shave off a quarter, half, or 1% on a loan, that's big, especially on these.
So, unless you have anything that would conclude our presentation, Drain Code 101.
Okay.
And we'll be back next year for Drain Code 201.
There you go. Maybe we have to go back to 090 instead of 0 again, so. But, um, commissioners, let's do questions from commissioners first, and then if there are any questions from people in our audience that were not answered, then we'll, um, allow that a little bit as well, since we're in a little bit of a morgue thing. But, one question I had, since we had talked a little bit about Pine Lake, and we've talked a little bit about Pleasant Lake and Mud Lake with some of the recent things that we talked about yesterday from Mr. Campbell, this complaint with the leaking.
Yep.
Culvert under there. So, um, there was a plate, when we had the flooding, there was a plate in Pleasant Lake that you had said was required to be pulled out.
Yeah.
And at that point, they were talking about establishing a legal lake level for Pleasant Lake, which people weren't very happy about at that point, because there was additional cost involved in that. I know some of that was picked up by some of the Watson Drain District in there. You take the flip side on that, we were involved with Pine Lake, because that came before the board. We had people in here almost every week talking about love, hate, whatever the case was. Seemed like it was somewhere in the 50/50 neighborhood, or 60/40, whatever it was, and nothing ever ended up happening with that. The county board never made a decision to go through with it. I think we had acquired about $300,000 in cost taking, to look at putting a drain in place.
Correct.
Nothing ever happened there, so there, that's an assessment role that still needs to be updated.
Correct.
They still have no drain.
Correct.
Based on what we're hearing, there was enough that they didn't wanna drain, and now they're in the opposite effect a few years later with low water level.
Right. Well, yes and no. We're still a foot over our legal lake level, and that's, that gets ticklish.
Based on the judge's ruling of seasonal variations, you can't control mother nature, so, you know.
Yeah, well, and it's, that seasonal variation is, is tricky when, I mean, I would expect that'd be, we've done a little research, and that's, should be one of the four seasons of the year, spring, summer, fall, and winter, but when it's year after year after year. Higgins Lake ran into that. It was low, what, four or five years, and rolled by four or five inches, and a group got together and sued the county, and guess what? Now, all the residents, including me, are gonna pay for their special assessment district up there to fix the dam or whatever they're doing.
Yeah, fix the dam. I mean, you know, you could, conceivably, if you're a low level like that, you could build augmentation wells, they're very expensive, they gotta be permitted, so, there's challenges.
And Higgins Lake.
Lake levels are really tricky.
Yeah.
They are tricky. I mean, um, you know, unless you figure out a way to make it rain or make it dry up, I mean, you know, there's, there's only so much you can do, sometimes.
So, why was the county board involved so much in Pine Lake, but not in Pleasant Lake? Like, we never had to, we never had to do anything with a legal lake level for Pleasant Lake, but.
Well, Pleasant Lake, you guys passed the original feasibility study way back in 19.
Yeah.
And we've moved forward, got it established. Well, we don't have the legal lake level set, we have the permit from the DEQ, because we found out when we did Long Lake, we went to the circuit court to set the legal lake level, and then DEQ didn't wanna give us a permit to put structure in. And they fought us tooth and nail and said how the, it was a real debacle, because we had proposed a six-foot outlet structure on the outlet of Long Lake, and they wouldn't allow it. They said, "You can't go that big." They made us go to a four-foot. Then, when we went to put the dam in, they said, "Oh, that four-foot, no, you need a wider culvert." And we said, "No, you permitted this four-foot, and we wanted a six." So, we, Thomas Horak asked me if we would build the steel structure out and over with a four-foot board here and two one-footers on the side. So, this time, we've worked on getting our permits. We've got the one for Pleasant and the one for Cloverdale and Ganaberry and a few others, and then we're gonna go to the courts and say, "Okay, this was permitted, DEQ agrees to it," and then we'll set that. So, and that's supposed to be done this summer, but.
We're ready to go, we just need our engineer to sign our affidavits.
Oh, well, I didn't know where it was, I just.
Yeah, but they're at least prepared.
Little by, little by, little by, little.
The geese. Sent them again yesterday.
We still hope to have lake levels set on Pleasant Lake?
Not done yet.
Right.
Yeah.
Or Pine Lake?
Pine Lake we.
Pine Lake we're not going to, right?
In my druthers on Pine Lake, the county would ask the court to remove all lake levels on Pine Lake. If you don't have a way to control that water, you're looking for liability, and.
These kettle lakes, like Pine, or what else, what else is there? I, you know, getting water from, you know, in Pine Lake, I think we were actually looking at jumping watersheds, like, from the, which, yeah, we looked at. I mean, at DEQ really doesn't like that.
Yeah.
How do you get water out of a kettle lake, you know? So, those ones that were set, there's nothing to open, you know?
Well, and you risk the liability. One gentleman brought it to me, is if the lake is low and you pump in all summer long and bring that up a foot, and then you get a lot of rain the next year, and the lake comes up three, and you got flooded people, aren't we kinda unhooked? Because we added water that never should've been, you know, it's, it's.
That makes sense.
That's why I say Joe Colini suggested we go to the circuit court and unwind the legal lake level, just let nature take its course.
Why isn't there any, um, and you talked about lake levels versus drain districts, but it seems like it should take more than five people to assess $8 million over two drain districts.
Yeah. Well, this is the way it's going. The inter-county board, up until two years ago, three years ago, if you wanted a petition for an inter-county board in a, in a municipality or whoever didn't do it, it, you, it required 50%, a number equal to 50% of the people that abut the lake, oh, the drain. So, if you had a five-mile-long drain, it took a lot of people to sign a petition. Cool. Two or three years ago, they changed it to match the county, five people. So, they're getting more.
I wish I had an answer to this. Legislative, um, decision that, I looked at a drain code from, I don't know, the 30s, same number, ah, you know, five?
Yeah.
Picked it out of the sky. I have no idea, you know, and it does, you know, on the one hand, you can see, you know, people are in trouble, you wanna try to help them, right, um, if you can. On the other hand, I mean, you're really, we frequently run into situations where, I'm not gonna blame anybody, people build where they shouldn't build, or, or townships approve building where they shouldn't approve building, you know, and that, then it falls in the lap of the drain commissioner, fix it, you know, so.
Yeah, a lot of, a lot of permitting where maybe they shouldn't have been allowed to build, and Catherine and I have had discussions about that, because she uses that on planning and zoning, and she said, "Well, we don't dictate what level." I said, "Well, yeah, but some, you know, I mean, I can think of one right now, the house is built and there's a swamp right in the backyard," and it's like.
That's my district now.
Uh-huh, yep, got it all.
The thing that keeps coming back, and I'm glad Ted's here from Prairieville Township, but, I mean, Berry Township and Prairieville Township were assessed somewhere in the 900,000 range.
Yeah.
For their assessments on the Watson Drain.
Correct.
That's crippling to small townships over that time. But five people started that process, where Crooked Lake, being a kettle lake, you know, without an outlet, there was no voice. Where, in retrospect, would it have been smarter to buy those properties and condemn them and not spend $8 million and spend $3 million instead, you know?
Yep.
I mean, I don't, I don't know what the answer is, we're in retrospect here, but that's what keeps coming up when I look at the penalty that was on those small townships. It's painful.
Well, that's, that's actually what triggered our lawsuit down on Crooked Lake, because we, Brian Sunday, that was the first thing we looked at. Okay, what if we just buy these houses? Well, we'd have to go through condemnation and all this stuff, and he figured 15 of them homes, by the time you got all your permitting and everything put together, you'd have $6 million into them. And there was a lot more than 15 homes that were impacted. That led to our, and I don't know if it was intentional or not, but our town, our meetings that we were having there, the leader that wanted them meetings, put, well, a lawyer from Grand Rapids came in and sued and said, "Wait a minute. You're flooding that property, so you have to do reverse condemnation and buy them." And we ended up with 200,000, because the judge said, I mean, in, in a nutshell, the judge said, "They are working on a relief project." The problem down there, though, is if we would've bought them 10 or 15, we were watching the water going up instead of coming down. And the next year, we would've had a little tiny, a little bit smaller tax base, and more people flooded. And like I say, it went all the way back to Glaspy Lake, back to Pleasant Lake, it just, that issue, as the water kept coming up. Um, and like I say, my big fear was the health impact of it. You know, you get wells that are not watertight, getting surface water into there, then you got a hell of a mess. If the sewers happen to get inundated with that, then you got a sewer must. The sewer authority, when we backcharged in Glaspy Lake, that was the first thing we tried, we found out that their monitoring wells were lower than where the, their ASBIL said, and I don't know how well that sewer authority was actually working. When you, when you put in for a permit, and you know you got six feet of dry ground to infiltrate, and all of a sudden you don't, what does that do to that sewer authority? Because I went down on a, at a house on Osborne, and you could smell the chemicals in that water in Glaspy Lake. Now, you can't tell me the sewer authority was working correctly at that time. It was working, but I don't know if it was treating the water the way it was intended in their permit that came from '92, and that scared the hell out of me, because I thought, "That ain't good."
Well, and was the Watson Drain, was that a five-year permit? Was the Watson Drain, when you're taking water out of, out of basically Watson, out of one watershed into the Cloverdale, Chain of Lakes Cloverdale, was that a five-year permit, or what was it?
Correct. It's a five-year permit, and we still have to have discussions with DEQ, because when you get a permit, typically, it's for the construction to get things done. And we're still kinda in limbo whether, what we have to do, you know, we may not use that system for another 10, 15, 20 years. You know, when the, when the lake level, when the, when Lake Michigan comes up, which it's gonna do, and start in about four or five years, and eventually that water comes up, then we gotta somehow negotiate with DEQ that we still are allowed to pump if we need to.
There was, um, I don't hold me to it, but there was a time when they would do either, you know, more than five-year permits or renewable permits, something like that. They don't really have that anymore, although if they've issued a permit for the same activities, which is the same activities that they permitted, you know, renewing it, I couldn't promise anything with the department, but they, they'll issue a new permit, if it's, if it's the same, maybe a few little differences, but they'll get, you can get another permit.
Yeah, well, I know you're, um, based on the finances, the frustration with those people in that district, of course, are now we have people who can't even put their boats in, because the water's so low.
Yeah.
So, the water's so low in those lakes, especially Crooked Lake, Mud Lake, I mean, it's just, even Pine Lake's got some lower areas, and we know it's a, we know that it's a cyclical thing, so, we just wanna be aware of that going forward and really look at some of these things. But, questions from commissioners?
I got one. Um, with the, all the dams we have in Berry County, who's in charge of inspecting them and who pays for them inspections?
All but Podunk Lake have special assessment districts that pay. We get the engineers to inspect them, we send them every three years to DEQ, Thomas Horak reviews them, signs off on them, and tell, you know, I mean, we get recommendations from the engineer, what all we have to do is update. Podunk Lake, as far as I know, is the only one that doesn't have a special assessment district. And I've been working all year to get somebody that will give me a price on doing the repairs, so I can bring it up to the commissioner and say, "Okay, these repairs have to be done. How do you wanna do it? Do you wanna set up a special assessment district?" Like Doug said, that, you know, you can, or you don't have to. It doesn't say you have to, but in my mind, if you live on that lake or you have deeded access, you should be paying for that dam. I get no benefit being eight miles away to that dam. But, and the lake level statute's pretty clear, it is people that are abutting the lake or have deeded access. So, but, yeah, all the other ones do have a special assessment district.
Okay. Commissioner Bassett?
On that point, going off on Dave's point, um, with our issues at Crooked Lake, I had a lot of constituents who were talking to me, they're nowhere near the lake, but yes, they had an assessment for the pump, and.
Can you bring your microphone a little closer?
Sorry. So, you know, they had all these assessments, but they're, you know, literally miles, some of them, they said.
Correct.
They were that far away. So, you know, how that line was drawn, I, I thought it was because, you know, you're part of that water up or down or whatever, for earlier point, but can you explain that to me better, so I can talk to the constituents better?
Okay. If they're in the drain district, they get an assessment period, no ifs, ands, or buts. If your water, like I say, if Noah's flood came, would you, where would your water go? And so, even though they're back lots, now, there's a number of them down on Crooked Lake, that the back lots had just as much flooding as the front lots, because they actually built the fronts up, and then the water was trapped in the back. Weaver, Terry Cushing's property was flooded out, and it can't get to the lake, but it's, and because the ground. and because the groundwater's so high. All the way back to Berry Township where, you know, Berry Township's new offices are, the bottom of that hill, that guy was flooded out. He ended up, because of the water coming in, and the ground wouldn't take it because of the high groundwater, he actually took out his slider in his basement, had to block it up just to keep the water out of his basement. And, I mean, that's, and that's the thing, people are not seeing the overall effect of this stuff. Yeah, you see it on the lakefront, yep, the house's water's coming in, you got fish in your basement. Yeah, you see they should pay. But then, as you get further and further away, like Glaspy and the impact on the sewer plant, or, you know, Heidi Presley on Floria, that Vern Scott built her house in the 60s, and he said, I said, "Did they break, is there a broken field tile?" He said, "No, there's never been any field tile there." He said, "There's no reason that house should be flooded, except it was backed that far up into Glaspy." It just, and that's, you know, like Dave explained, the plate on Floria, we got sued because the Crooked Lake people said the Pleasant Lake people's water were flooding them out. So Avi Kirk, and she really didn't want to write that permit, it said, "The steel plate shall be operated by the drain commissioner at his discretion," because they didn't, you know, they didn't want to get sued by Pleasant Lake, and they didn't want to get sued by Crooked Lake. So here, dump it on the drain commissioner. So, you know, and that's, you know, when people, when you start going to all the places I had to go and look at the flooding that they had, and it's like, yeah, this is really, really bad all the way around. The park there, Prairieville Township Park was damn near underwater. I know Ted was down there. It's like people couldn't use the dock because it was floating. All the way back to Pleasant Lake when we had all these issues, not Mary Mcelly, but Patty Herndon lives on North Bay Road in the swamp behind her house because it couldn't infiltrate through the ground, was going through her basement. There was septic issues where the septic systems were underwater on Pleasant Lake, and you could smell them. It just, it's so far-reaching in this stuff. And that's why when the, you know, and I understand the township's point of not wanting to have to pay, but it was a hell of an impact at the township as a whole, on both sides of the, both sides of the township lines. It was just a mess.
Other questions from commissioners? Ted, did you get your questions answered?
There was just, I thought maybe I had a chance I could bring up a couple of them. I was glad to hear that you're looking at the Alleghen County, because I remember when we had the meeting at the Dalton Gymnasium, and the Alleghen County Commissioner, Drain Commissioner was there and you were there.
Yep.
And it had to be approved by both boards in order to go ahead with the lake level project. And they don't have an assessment district for those 40 parcels. I think originally, probably back when things were done with Pine Lake, there was one house across the road. Now it's completely full, along with the four parcels that are on Doster Road that are actually down the lake. They have their own private beach with complete access, which they all have access to that private beach on Pine Lake. And when the lake was really high, in 894, they had no beach. It was right up into the, into the side of the hill. So now, they have a huge beach. But they have, they have access, and they don't pay anything. They don't pay anything for the weed assessment either. They, Gun Plains Township won't create an assessment district for them. I've talked to the clerk over there, and they don't see any reason why they should create one. I think there needs to be some pressure put on Alleghen County to, you know, have that brought up, because that's 40 additional parcels to go into that 300,000. I went through, and that was another question I had, when I asked about the front lots and back lots. You know, I went through that 40,000 that we've already paid, and the parcels that paid it, there were certain percentages, and that was another question I, some of the percentages were different, and I don't know how those were determined with that initial 40,000. But I see that the circuit court sets the district, how are they going to set the district for Pine Lake? Other than what, I mean, because if you take everything on this, there are 660 parcels, yet the parcels that were charged were 532.
Only 532?
Yeah.
I thought it was closer to 600, but...
No.
Well, and I would expect part of that is, there's been a lot of property splits down there, so...
Well, a lot of it were, I mean, there were South Gate, then there's multiple parcels. That was another question I had, too. If you own five parcels on the lake...
You should still get five assessments.
Yeah.
For the simple fact that you can sell it, and this is, we had a day, a border review a couple of years ago down on Watson, and the, you know, our belief is, you own two parcels, and your neighbor owns one, and you split, you get an assessment for half and half, and you sell yours, you get out of half of it. That ain't right. So our belief is if you have two parcels, you pay the same as somebody, you know? One parcel is 10 bucks, first parcel's 10 bucks, the next one is 10 bucks, because you have the right to combine them in, as one parcel, and then you only get one. And that's been our statute all the way along.
Okay. Yeah, because when I went through this, there were quite a few that multiples didn't get charged. And it's, and I know you talked about you maybe have a new district, but now is that going to match up with the circuit court?
We will have to, the district will have to match circuit court, and the engineers will have to go through and figure out how many parcels are in there. And then, we have to review the deeds to make sure they are, you know, they have to have deeded access. The law's pretty clear on that, you know? So it gets really, really tricky in so many old roles...
It's a process. I'm sure it's going to be a process. I've gone through my weed assessment district, I went through your lake level district, and, you know, I'm like, there's nothing that matches, so...
And it's, it's a challenge.
Yeah.
Could I have the weed, is that a lake improvement board? Do you know?
It's a township thing.
It was originally, it was originally brought up by the Pine Lake Association.
Okay.
And so, we've been doing that since 2000, actually before 2012. But that's, and then that just gets approved by the township board.
Okay. Because I agree with you. I mean, if you're on the lake, you probably should play, when there's a weed assessment, you should probably pay for it.
Well, they just did a spot check on where they come through because we have a raise of mill foil, and Starry Stone work on Pine Lake, it just came through and did a spot treatment. And where do you think they spot treated?
At the landing.
At the private beach.
How could it go any other way? Sounds like you guys need to have a conversation, a little more detailed.
And admittedly, when you go through some of the records, one that, the statute on lake level said lakefront and deeded access. But typically, townships do not pay, and the county does not pay. But Tom Doyle, when he did the rebuild on Crystal Lake back in 2007, '08, went to the association, said, "Here's three ways to spread it." And one of them was to stick 12% on the county. Now, I don't know if, when we get to that project, if the county's going to say, "No, it's not called out. This is on the landowners." We'll see.
I think that's, that was...
Well, you know, I mean...
On May 13th, at your meeting, brought up, that's when Commissioner Tunis had brought that up, you know, how it puts up with Pine Lake.
Yeah.
You're invested, the county was interested in picking it up, and I saw a lot of...
I got a question for Ted. Okay, Mr. Jim?
Sure.
How do we force Alleghen's hand to turn that into a drain district? As far as any part, I mean, I'm sorry, if it goes into assessment goals?
Well, you know, Alleghen County, they, they approved the whole project. I mean, they had to in order, because it crosses two counties. So I would think that they would need to somehow direct Gun Plains Township, which is where the property is, to somehow creatively create an assessment district, you know, for those and do whatever process it is to create that.
Well, can the drain board force them to do that?
Well, okay, there's two different things going on here, really. You've got a lake level that the county, both county boards have approved. What you're talking about is more along the line of a different statute, is a lake improvement where you can assess, you know, spraying weeds or whatever, treating the lake.
But this is, it's still the lake level.
Yeah. You still want to do, but...
Oh, definitely.
You don't assess weed treatment in a lake level project. That's just for dam costs and dealing with the water.
Okay, the weed assessment, completely acceptable. If they don't, if they don't want to, if they don't want to be part of the weed assessment, I guess, you know, I don't know how we could force them to do that.
Yeah, I did think about that.
But to be part of the 300,000...
The county's already, I mean, they've moved forward, this was in front of them. Denise took it in front of them. I was there with her, and they said, "Look, this is a project, the courts have already set that district, including the Alleghen things, so they're going to have to pay." You know, and I think Chris Machala will under, you know, he's on board with it, I believe.
The drain commissioner?
Yeah. Yeah, he's, Denise didn't run, Chris Machala stepped up, and he's now the new drain commissioner. But, you know, I mean, it's obligated by the courts. You know, you're part of the district, as far as I'm concerned, and that's what we're going to shoot for.
Gentlemen, thank you.
Yeah.
Educational. Appreciate the time.
More than you ever wanted to know about...
Put the PowerPoint. Well, we've been learning a lot about it our whole life here, because when I came on the board, we were dealing with Coldwater Creek, and then we had flooding, and it's just been a, more than I ever thought I'd need to learn as a commissioner, but here we are. So, thank you.